The school board to order. It's Monday, May 4th, 2015. We are in the administration building at 12121 West North Avenue. And we will begin with a moment of silent reflection, please. Thank you. Mrs. Galante?
Mr. Bodden?
Here.
Mrs. Casey?
Here.
Mrs. Vee?
Here.
Mr. Kroner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Miltfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here. We're going to start our meeting tonight with a presentation on the county programs, one portion of the county programs. And I'll ask Principal Tom Seidel if he would step forward, please, to introduce his staff.
Well, we were just saying the other day that this is probably the first time you've had an entire staff come to a school board meeting.
Great, thank you all.
For something positive.
Thank you.
So, no, we're glad to be here tonight. And we want to showcase a little bit of what happens at Children's Hospital. It's a very unique program, certainly to the district, but even around the country. For all the children's hospitals in the United States, there's a handful, let's see, less than 10, that actually have education programs that are with the local school district. So, a lot of them are just hiring tutors and things to do that. So, I'm not stealing anybody's thunder here. Each of our staff has prepared a little something, and so they're going to share it with you. And I still thought we could all stand around as a circle, but I thought we'd have to sing something. Teresa Barrage is going to start.
Good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity. All of us are so proud of our program. And anytime we can speak about it, we're very proud. So, please also forgive us if we go over in time. We all tried to condense all of what we need to say, about two minutes apiece. Timed it a couple of times ourselves this morning. Let's go a little bit over, so we'll do our best.
No worries, thank you.
Okay, good. All right, all right. Okay. So, again, my name's Teresa Barrage. I've been in the district for 23 years. I was at TOSA West as a special ed teacher for 14, and the last nine at Children's Hospital. Very blessed to have an opportunity to be there. So, I am going to share just a little background about the program. It actually started with a move to Children's Hospital moving from its downtown location in 1998. In December of 98, it moved to its current location at the Milwaukee Regional Medical Complex. And then in February of 89, they hired one teacher, the school district hired one teacher, and they had 14 volunteers helping to take care of all of the children at Children's Hospital who were there for medical services. In 1990, there was a hiring of another teacher that fall, and there was one aide and eight volunteers. In 1995, we had three teachers and one aide. So, it kind of progressed as the word got out, as things started to change in the medical world, they started hiring more teachers to service all of the children. Just this February, we had a little shift, as we know, in the district. And now we have four teachers and an instructional assistant at Children's. We service children as young as 3K. I had a couple of 3Kers this year. I went, "What? What?" And I primarily work with 3K through 4th grade. And then we divide up the kids amongst ourselves, and I'll let them share what they're doing. We provide our instruction at the bedside. The four of us teachers go out and about. And then we also have a schoolroom. And we also service kids in the clinics buildings, various different clinics. And as I said, I don't want to steal anyone's thunder. You'll hear a little bit about all of those programs. But there are 70 different clinics at Children's Hospital. There are 296 beds for inpatient stays. And in 2014, Children's Hospital serviced close to 24,000 children. So, with all of that being said, when kids are in the hospital during the school year, we are blessed to be able to work with them and help provide their education to varying degrees. As far as our numbers go, to date, to date in 2014, or 2015, 2014-15 school year, we have had about 311 children attend the schoolroom. And between the five of us teachers, the four of us teachers, we see probably between 1,200 to 1,400 kids. So. I'll hand over to Pam. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Pam Niesgoda, and I've been in the district for 17 years now. The first 13 at Longfellow Middle School as 8th grade special ed teacher, and the last four at Children's Hospital. Mike and I, we both split working with children in grades 5 through 12. So, we cover a vast majority of subjects and ages. I'm just going to talk a little bit about how our program at Children's Hospital is different than your standard classroom setting. So, our school program is in a very unique setting, one that is vastly different than the classrooms we're all previously used to working in. As being Wauwut TOSA School District employees, we are expected to follow the school district guidelines and the direction of Tom Seidel. We are also bound by the Children's Hospital rules, guidelines, and procedures. We follow a very strict dress code. We have to pass their yearly safety training. We follow their communication, patient confidentiality HIPAA, and their release of information procedures. We maintain updated training on their Epic computer system. We follow hospital protocol for entering and leaving a patient's room, as well as maintaining like the cleanliness and the safetiness in our own classroom, just to name a few things. And we're also overseen by a hospital administrator. Over the length of our careers, we could probably all count on one hand how many children with medical issues or a serious illness that each of us have encountered or worked with. At Children's, we meet and work one-on-one with children of various medical degrees every day. Kids who are admitted to the hospital for medical issues, such as like an appendicitis, a broken bone, or a migraine, are kids that we may work with one time, or maybe a few times during the course of their stay. Children who have chronic illnesses such as Crohn's, cystic fibrosis, diabetes, or sickle cell, those kids we track because usually they come in several times throughout the year. And so, we continually work with them every time they're inpatient. For students who have been diagnosed with cancer, a blood disorder, an eating disorder, a traumatic brain injury, and even in need of a transplant, those kids are, for those kids, we are often their main or sole teacher for the school year. Since they're in the hospital for numerous months at a time, they don't get to attend their school. When working with all of these children, 99% of the time, we get to communicate with our parents on a daily basis. And parents are very appreciative of our school program because, and they enjoy hearing what homework their child completed that day and their progress. So, basically, we have parent-teacher conferences five days a week. So, that's nice. Unfortunately, though, at times, we do work with students whose parents we never get to meet because they're never at the hospital. So, that's heartbreaking. A major challenge of our job is maintaining emotional stability. When we work with these long-term patients especially, it's hard not to establish a special relationship or a bond, not only with the child, but also with their families. We interact with them on a daily basis, and so we get to experience the good days and the bad days with them. On occasion, our job one day may be, may be to just give a hug, or to be a sounding board for a parent to relieve some stress or frustration or their sadness. I know I can speak for all of us that the toughest part or day of our job by far are the days when we receive the news that one of our students have passed. Typically, we have just a brief moment to digest and accept that information, but then we have to move on and go to the next bedside and teach. The TOSA School Program at Children's Hospital is very different than the standard classroom setting. It's one that has been life-changing for every one of us. It's one that is truly unique. It is a hidden gem, and it's one we feel that more people should know about. And it's a program that we are all very honored to be a part of.
Hi, I'm Mike Trokio. I'm in my 20th year teaching, 18th in the district. I was nine years at Longfellow Middle School, also 8th grade special education. And then the last nine, I've been at Children's Hospital. So, also still coach, track, and cross-country at Longfellow, so doing that for quite some time. I'm going to talk just a little bit about kind of a typical day at the hospital as far as what we do bedside, because that's really where the four of us teachers do. The majority of our, our work is in a student's room, pulling up a chair bedside. Epic was mentioned, that's the computer system. Some of you or all of you maybe are familiar with that. Almost every hospital, major hospital uses that system. Every morning when we get to work, that's really our first thing, is logging on, seeing who's in the hospital, what the census is. We each kind of have different floors that we work on. Like Pam said, she and I share 5th through 12th. So, we have different floors that we cover, some we share. And our first thing is, is who's in the hospital, kind of make a list of who we're going to go check on, see if there are kids that we know, maybe they hadn't been in and now we're back in, that sort of thing. Once we have that, that's when we head out into the floors. And typically, what we do is if a student is in their second full day in the hospital, so for instance, if someone came to the hospital on Monday, we would check on them on a Wednesday. And unless we get a consult, or it's a previously known student, someone that we've worked with before. One of the reasons we do that is, is usually the first day that a student's in, no matter what they're in for, it's a very busy day. There's, you know, a lot of tests or different things going on. Another reason was, especially when we only had three teachers, the numbers-wise, if we tried to check on everyone on the first day, we just wouldn't have time to see everybody. So, that's kind of the typical thing we do is on the second full day. We go to a room, and when we go to a room, we have to see, we look on the outside, and there's a little, you know, picture there, and whether or not it's just wash your hands to go in, whether or not you have to put a mask on, or a gown and gloves, or a gown, glove, and mask. So, we have to see, you know, whether or not the student's in some type of isolation. If they are, you know, we just follow the protocol, wash, wash up, and do, just like the nurses or doctors or any other staff would do. When we go into a room, we, first thing we do is obviously introduce ourselves, tell them all about the program, who we are. We're Wauwut TOSA School District teachers. We're here, you know, full-time, and we're here to help. And parents usually are thrilled. Students, not always. So, sometimes you get a, like, "I can't believe I can, I have to do school at the hospital" type of thing. So, but typically after, especially kids who have to be there a while, they really, really come to appreciate as much as the parents. We try to find out right away, "Do you have work? If you don't have work, can we get work? You know, if you're going to be here, length of stay, if it sounds like you're going to be here a few days." We say, you know, if the parents can help getting work. Otherwise, we contact schools quite a bit. We have a consent form that we have from the district that we get filled out. We also have a release of information from the hospital. Once we have that, if the parents like us to kind of take on that aspect, that's something we try to do because the parents are focusing on their child and obviously going through a lot with whatever health issues they have. So, if we can kind of take that burden off of them and focus and be the person that's the contact and get the work, and not only get the work, but then of course help them, that's what we try to do. Once we have work, whether it's from us contacting them, typically, we talk to guidance counselors, sometimes teachers, sometimes associate principals, social workers at the schools. But we usually, I like to send an email, I think all of us do, and then they can kind of forward that out to all their, the staff of the school district that they're from. And we see kids from all over, all over the state, different states, I mean, all over the country, and even other countries. We've had students from, you know, that come to Children's because it's such a well-known hospital. But once we get work there, we, you know, typically, like I, myself, and Pam, 45 minutes, about a class period's worth, we try to spend with each student. I think elementary, sometimes it's a little shorter because they have a little shorter attention span and that sort of thing. But, you know, like I said, we go in and get whatever the work is. And for us, sometimes we have to be right, like, on the spot. Sometimes kids say, "Oh, yeah," or the parents say, "Yeah, I don't understand this math problem. I'm glad you're here." Well, we have to be able to come in and say, "Okay," you know, no matter what it is, whether it's, you know, 5th grade math, or it's, you know, whatever honors geometry, we kind of have to be on right then and there. We try to, if we can, plan ahead. So, especially long-term patients, you know, we see, "Okay, what do you have?" And a lot of it is in our prep time or at home, bringing stuff home so that we can kind of almost do the assignment before we try to do what the students, so we understand, so we can maximize our time. I guess the biggest thing is, you know, our main goal is to try to keep kids as current as possible. You know, when they're at the hospital, they're not, you know, they're missing out on school, especially high school kids, you know, they want to graduate, they want to stay on, on course to graduate on time. So, but it's true with all the kids, all ages, keeping their skills up, try to help them maintain as much of that as they would if they were back at home. So, to kind of maintain their skills and their work production. And if we can do that, you know, that's, that's really our ultimate goal. And, you know, every kid, it's normal to go to school. So, when they're at the hospital, they're obviously missing out on that. So, even doing school kind of brings a little bit of that sense of normalcy to their day. And it kind of takes their mind off, you know, maybe some of the things that they're going through and, you know, as we're doing that and, you know, going through an assignment and talking and getting to know them, like Pam said, it's just a nice, kind of a break because we're non-medical and, like I say, we're someone that they can relate to that from, like, outside the hospital. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Dylan Jones, and I've been in the school district just going on one year. I was hired last April. I'm the instructional aide in the schoolroom. And the schoolroom is open from 12 to 3, Monday through Friday. I see all children K-3 through 12 who've been medically approved by their doctors to come into the schoolroom. The children come with all types of illnesses and all types of medical equipments, wheelchairs, IV poles, CAS. So, we just deal with whatever they come in and make it work. It's a safe zone, which means that no medical procedures can be done in the schoolroom. So, it's a safe place. They know that there, no doctors, no nurses come in. It operates like a one-room schoolhouse, which means each child that comes in gets individual attention from me. It serves, the schoolroom is utilized in many different ways. A child might come in with their packet of schoolwork, and I'll sit down and help them complete it, make modifications if they can't write, things like that for them. Or they might come in and they say they don't have any schoolwork, but they know they've been studying this and they're missing out. I do a lot of practice with addition, subtraction, facts, letter sounds, because those are concepts. And sometimes some will come in and they'll say, "Oh, today was Dr. Seuss Day, and I'm missing it." So, I'll try to quickly figure out something that kind of makes them feel like they're not missing totally their Dr. Seuss Day. It's also then if they have nothing and they feel like they're fine with school and everything's great in that aspect, I have theme units that we, I change out. And I think calendars were passed out, so you can see what we're, currently, we're doing a Mother's Day theme. I try to make sure that the unit has activities that are appropriate for all age levels and a variety of different skill levels, because I never know whether I'm going to get a third, a four-year-old, or a 9th grader in the classroom. If the theme unit doesn't interest them, then I have, I always tell the kids, "We have 101 things to do in the schoolroom." And I think you've got that list of activities that is offered through the schoolroom. And I kind of pull that activity, the list out, and we kind of go through it. They pick something out, and then it's my job to put an educational twist to it, so they don't really realize they're getting something educational. And then find, we're also a resource room. On a daily basis, we give out books and magazines for the children to read in their room, and then those books and magazines go home with them. We loan out electronic equipment, laptops, Kindles, and iPads. And then we also hand out school supplies and art supplies. A lot of times, we'll get requests for notebooks or pencils or pens so that the kids can finish activities in their room, and we just hand them out. We will be open, the schoolroom is open during the summer. It follows the same schedule, 12 to 3, Monday through Friday. And I'm doing a storybook theme where we'll be talking about authors and illustrators of children's books. The one thing about the schoolroom, a lot of people think it's just for the child, but in reality, parent, the parents are welcome to stay with the child, but in, however, school is a place where parents are very comfortable leaving their child, and the child is very comfortable being left. It's a normal part of their life when they're not in the hospital. That comfort zone allows the parents the chance to leave their child there, which then allows the parent to have time to recharge, to answer that work email, to attend to personal matters, or even take a much-needed nap that they might not get. I really thank you for the opportunity to be, to be able to explain to you my job at, in the schoolroom, and I'm very proud of the, my team, and the work we do, and the results that we see every day. It's really rewarding to see the smiles on the kids and them coming back in. Just today, we, I worked with a student, one of the first students I worked with, Teresa and I worked with him, he came back to visit. He was back in the hospital for a day procedure and came up to visit us. So, it's really rewarding.
Well, I'm the caboose here. I'm the last one. I'll try to be brief here. I'm Sabina Larson. I've been in the district for about 19 years. I'm kind of moving eastward on Warham Plank, because I started at Detention Center as a Title I teacher, and I was at Plank Road, and now I'm at Children's Hospital. So, I've really been in a variety of situations, mostly kind of alternative settings, which I, I do like. I'm just going to talk about some of the clinics and the rounds that we have with specialists. So, just to list some of the clinics, we work with people in oncology, bone marrow transplant patients, hematology, infusion, and dialysis. We also have a next steps clinic, which is kind of interesting, is for survivors of cancer or a bone marrow transplant. This is the only clinic in the nation that has teachers on the team of providers. And there, we have a chance to sign up, to talk to individual families, to support their educational needs. So, we kind of ask them, you know, "How's it going in school? Are there any concerns related to like memory, attention, or organizational concerns?" Because many times, survivors experience some changes in their thinking performance. So, we try to give them some support in that way when they go back to school. And let's see, we also work with rounds with hospital specialists, which is called like the hot team or the hot unit. I mean, it's hematology, oncology, and transplant. And there, we sit on a weekly basis, and we have people such as virtual careperson, social worker, psychologist, child life, art therapist, nurses, and we, that's a place where we can find out if patients are appropriate for school. And then there's one other cardiac, I'm still kind of learning about some of these programs, as you can tell, where we support children who are transitioning back because of post-heart transplants. One clinic that I do attend, and I just thought I'd give you a little slice of this, and I'll, I'll go, is the dialysis clinic. And these are a group of teen boys. They are there at 5:30 in the morning. And when I come into that room, they are lying out, stretched out in these recliners with these little cute hat, you know, knit hat on and fleece blanket. And sometimes they got the earbuds in, and I have to be the cheerleader and say, "Hey, you got to wake up now and do a little work. Do you have your classwork? Have you been going to school?" And some of the kids, I know some of their background, classworks, so I may do some work ahead of time to maybe ask them about the book they're reading, or if it's an iPad that they have and they have some online work, then, you know, help them with maybe a science project that's on the iPad that they have. One student I have currently hasn't been bringing any work, so we're doing our own little assignment. He's writing a rap about being in the dialysis room. So, okay, there you go.
Just two quick last things. We gave you a little brochure. If you know Spanish, you can look at the Spanish side. But, but two things I just wanted to stress. The first one is, and I didn't talk about it, you know, these kids have had their lives just totally interrupted by something they didn't choose, they didn't pick, it just happened. So, the neat thing about the schoolroom is that it gives those kids just a piece of normal, you know? Most kids might say, "Ah, school." But for, for these, I think they really appreciate the fact that, that they're able to come, and for a little bit, they can forget about who's poking and prodding and the, the, what's the zone, what is it called?
Safe.
The save zone in the room. So, nothing's going to happen to them when they're in there. It's pretty cool. Second, we, we have personal friends right now, my wife and I, whose son's going through a third transplant situation, and they just rave about the care that they're getting, you know, and medical care, and just the buddies to hang around and do some work. He's young. And so, it's kind of neat that you know somebody personally who benefits from it. And the third thing on the bottom is we're located on 9 West. So, if you come into the main part of the hospital, you can ask for a pass to the schoolroom, and we'd love to have you stop by between 12 and 3. So, we'd love to see you. So, thanks for giving us the opportunity to share tonight. And we didn't go a lot along.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. You're truly inspiring, really. Board members, did you have comments or questions?
Mrs. Casey?
I would really like to thank you guys. I know that as teachers, you do this because it's a passion and, and our calling, and you have a very special calling. And fortunately, unfortunately, I know a handful of students that have benefited from you. So, thank you for making a difference in their stay in their lives. And I just had one question I was curious about, like, what is your communication with their homeschool, like, on their onset or during the course of their stay and upon their release?
Just throughout, like, when?
Yeah. Do you ever have contact or?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. We have a lot of contact. I kind of, I might probably went over it kind of quickly, but yeah, we, like I said, we typically contact the school and guidance counselor. We ask the parent, "Who do you think the best contact person is?" And then typically, it's the guidance counselor initially, but then that person will give us either all the teachers' emails, or, like, I like to send a general email of what I do, and then that gets forwarded to all the teachers. And then it's just a matter of whether what works best for them, phone calls, emails, usually emails, but it, there's, can be a lot of contact with schools. And they're emailing, saying, "How are things going?" We're, you know, a lot of times, we'll have work, and if the parent can't send it back, we'll fax it back completed, or, you know, email it back. So, a lot of communication. You know, parents are a big help with that, but like I said, when I was talking before, that it's nice that we can kind of take on that role and do the communicating, and most parents are really appreciative of that. And the school districts are too, because, you know, they're, a lot of times, they're surprised, like, "Oh, you have this." And so, because we, they're worried about, "Well, what are we going to do with this student that's going to be out for three months? And how are we going to, you know, get them to graduate?" And then they're appreciative that we have the ability to help them. So.
And I was also noticing many of you, if not all of you, have special ed. So, I'm sure with IEPs and 504s that that's so important, but thank you so much.
Mr. Bodden?
Once again, thank you very much. I'm sure you are a true blessing to the students you work with, as well as what you have given to this district. I do have a question, though, in terms of logistics. How do you make a determination? You talk about all your instruction, or most of it is at bedside. How do you make a determination whether that student is going to be served by the district? For example, if they're there for a day or two, is it, is it something that you would engage in, or do you look at, do you know what I'm asking? In terms of the communication, you now have a patient and getting back to the school and, and sort of making this work?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a loaded question, because sometimes we don't know how long a kid will be there. For myself, teaching the young kids, where Mike said, a lot of times, they'll go in and they're like, "Oh, I thought I had a break from school." Well, usually, kindergarten through 4th grader is like, "Yay, school, woo!" So, for those kids, we have curriculum available to us, some curriculum available to us in our schoolroom. So, I'm able to pull, "Okay, let's move forward. You need to be working on your multiplication facts. I know you're only here a day, but let's work on it." And I might not contact a teacher at all. For some, they're like, "I'm missing a test. Can you just call and have it faxed?" So, I do that real quick. Or for some, like Mike has shared, and Pam shared, all of us shared, that for some, Or for some, like Mike has shared, and Pam shared, Olive has shared, that for some, we really stay in close contact with those kids. Even if they're only there maybe three days, they might be missing something that's very, very, very important to them at that time, either timely on a teacher's end or timely on the child's end. So it really, it varies. But we always walk in thinking we are going to be doing school with this child. And sometimes parents are like, hmm, you know what? Like, I've seen an oncology child for the last year and a half or so, and she's back in today. I went in, okay, we're going to do school. And mom went, you know what? She's back in school full-time. We're just going to chill this week. We're not doing school this week. And I said, all right. She said, but if you could bring some origami, that would be great. So it's so, so individualized, which again, is a blessing and a curse. We don't know what we're going to come into, so.
Just a follow-up. I know you mentioned a little bit about this in terms of how you all log into, what's the server that...
Epic.
What sort of conflicts do you have in terms of scheduling? Because you're on all these different floors, you're only four people, and yet, my knowledge of what goes on at the hospital, there's always someone coming and interrupting. So I'm just wondering what you have to deal with, because you mentioned about this, trying to get this 45-minute block or 30. How do you, do you coordinate with the hospital staff, or is it kind of hit and miss?
We work with a lot of hospital staff, and I know we shared a lot of who we see. We do not have, because we're not hospital employees, that's one of our barriers, is we are not privy to a schedule, like pop up on the computer and see their daily schedule. So we maintain a lot of communication with nurses and the staff around us. So physical therapists, occupational therapists, speech therapists, child life comes into work with children. We have art therapists, music therapists, drama therapists. We have dog therapy going on. So a lot of times, we'll be in the midst of working really great in a lesson, and then a respiratory therapist shows up. And, oh, time for breathing treatment. Okay, pack up and go. Or we walk in to see a child and something else is going on. We might check back three or four times in a day, and, or they're starting to come in for clinic visits, and those are real complicated and real busy, because they want the kids in and out, and parents want in and out, because it's not an inpatient stay. So yeah, it's a constant barrier and tug and pull, and we want our time, but they're there for medical reasons, not for educational purposes per se. I mean, we're a nice, you know, distraction for that, but it can sometimes be very complicated. And sometimes, a lot of apologies. I tried to stop in three or four times yesterday, you were busy with that, and then you were going to surgery, and that, you know, so it's a lot of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Fee.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you very much. I think we're getting a picture of how complicated your jobs are, both professionally, with the number of students and the number of topics you need to cover, and all the scheduling issues, and also just the emotional aspect of it. But it's an incredibly important service that you provide, and so I just wanted to say thank you.
Anyone else? I actually have a question or two. All of you, I believe, except our schoolroom person, have quite a bit of time in the district. So how did you find your way to Children's Hospital? And I don't know if you, are you selected? Do you, you know, ask to go there? If anybody really feels compelled to share that, that'd be great, otherwise.
My personal experience was that I had a 26-year-old nephew who was born with bladder outside his body. And so he's from this area. And so he spent years at Children's Hospital, in and out. He's been around the country, you know, he's had like 52 surgeries and around his spine. And so he spent a lot of time in the service, he was programing children's. So when I came to Longfellow, you know, I would go visit him. And they would tell me, my brother and sister-in-law would tell me about, oh, the school program. And that's how I found about it. And I'd just do our own school personnel, but I didn't remember. And so I enjoyed my time at Longfellow. And I just waited till I was ready for a change, and then Longfellow was opening, and took that opportunity.
So you're all there because you chose to be there?
Yes.
You chose to make that move? Okay, that's great, thank you. Do you get, what kind of emotional training and support do you get?
Me?
We have each other, yeah.
Okay, okay.
There's spiritual care.
They have debriefings, especially on Monday. Like, there's times where, we've had a few different times throughout my nine years, where we just have had like a number of deaths that happened, and you get staff that we together and talk together. And like Teresa said, the spiritual care people are good about that. And it's just kind of a way to just share with each other, and, you know, I think we all have our own ways of dealing with it, you know? It's just like you say, I kind of have to kind of move on, but it can be really difficult. But usually, just by talking to others and just excusing yourself a little bit, to just kind of compose yourself and then kind of, and try to, same with the parents, which are people for them too, because it can be really tough. We, most of us have kids too, so put yourself in the, doing it, and...
It's like I said, it is, it's been a life-changing experience. I mean, all sitting or not having a severe illness for the child that's been in the hospital, you do appreciate life. You don't like taking things for granted, but just working there, it just, it puts a whole new perspective on just how, you know, precious life is, you know, and kids and family, it really changes your...
Well, thank you again. Clearly, you were all meant to be there. And so I'm really grateful that you all came out tonight. That's awesome. Thank you, Mr. Seidel. This was really informative and just really great. Thanks so much.
Another school for next year, I can invite you back.
Thank you, right?
All right, I have an agenda here, so. Okay, where'd I put my agenda?
Okay, next item will be public comment on non-agenda items. The members of the Wauwautosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity, excuse me, for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anybody who would like to comment on any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any community comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mrs. Casey.
Yes.
Mrs. Fee.
Yes.
Mr. Kroner.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld.
Yes.
Mrs. Randall.
Yes, thank you. Our first action item for the evening is the schoolboard officer selection, and I will turn that over to Dr. Riddle, please.
Thank you. According to schoolboard policy 0150, schoolboard officers will be nominated and elected in the following order: president, vice president, treasurer, and clerk. Paper ballots have been prepared to be used in the nomination and election process. Board members are listed alphabetically on the ballots. Per board policy, the president and vice president are not eligible for more than two consecutive one-year terms. Both President Randall and Vice President Casey have served one year and therefore are eligible for another term. And we will start out first with the nomination for president. Nominated for president, Mr. Bowden. So nominated, Mr. Bowden, Mrs. Milfeld, and Mrs. Randall. Vote for president, Mrs. Randall. Mrs. Milfeld. Mrs. Randall. Mrs. Randall. Mrs. Randall. Mrs. Milfeld. Mr. Bowden. Mrs. Randall has four votes and will be recommended for president. So nominated for vice president, Mrs. Casey. So nominated for vice president, Mrs. Casey and Mrs. Milfeld. The vote for vice president. Mrs. Casey. Mrs. Milfeld. Mrs. Milfeld. Mrs. Casey. Mrs. Casey. Mrs. Milfeld. And Mrs. Milfeld. Mrs. Milfeld will be recommended for vice president. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Kroner. So nominated for treasurer, Mr. Bowden, Mr. Kroner, and Mr. Meyer. Vote for treasurer. Mr. Kroner. Mr. Kroner. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Kroner. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Meyer will be recommended for treasurer. Nominated for clerk, Mrs. Fee. Mr. Bowden. So nominated for clerk, Mr. Bowden, Mrs. Casey, Mrs. Fee. Vote for clerk. Mrs. Fee. Mr. Bowden. Mrs. Casey. Mrs. Casey. Mr. Bowden. Mr. Bowden. Mrs. Casey. Mr. Bowden has three votes, Mrs. Casey has three votes, Mrs. Fee has one. So we will take a second vote. Nobody has a majority. The second vote for clerk. Mrs. Casey. Mr. Bowden. Mrs. Casey. Mrs. Casey. Mr. Bowden. Mrs. Casey. Mrs. Casey. Mrs. Casey will be recommended as clerk. So for officers, officers as recommended, Mrs. Randall for president, Mrs. Muefeld as vice president, Mr. Meyer for treasurer, and Mrs. Casey clerk.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kroner, would you please read the motion, filling in the names?
It is recommended that the following persons be elected officers of the Waltosas School Board in accordance with policy 0150 for a term beginning tonight and ending in May 2016. President, Mrs. Randall; Vice President, Mrs. Muefeld; Treasurer, Mr. Meyer; and Clerk, Mrs. Casey. Want me to read two as well?
Please, thank you.
It is recommended that the superintendent be appointed to act as secretary to the board, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Galante, please.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. Thank you very much. We have a action item in student learning. Mr. Bowden, please.
Thank you. It is recommended that the school board approve the attached list of prospective graduates from East and West High Schools with the understanding that students will complete all high school graduation requirements, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you.
Second, there.
Okay, board members, comment? Any community comment on the graduation candidates? Okay, seeing none. Mrs. Galante, please.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes, thank you. We have a report then from Human Resources, our staffing report for 2015-16.
Good evening. I'm pleased to say that there's not a lot to report because there isn't very much change, but I still wanted to walk through things and be transparent to you in terms of what's going on with staffing. Let me just follow through on the slide program to give you just a general sense of, you know, just an overview, and then we'll look more carefully into the spreadsheets and have a deeper conversation. Once again, the staffing plan is driven by a need to create a neutral budget plan while staying focused on the district priorities. There have been very minor shifts in the staffing, and I'll explain those to you as we go along. At the elementary level, the projected teacher FTE at elementary level for 2015-16 is down slightly from 2014-15. Keep in mind that staffing is always, this is a snapshot in time. With elementary, we staff conservatively in the beginning because we don't want to be in a position of having to take away teachers that people think are going to be coming to a given school, or that there's somebody that's going to be staying in the school and then we find out that they're being traded off someplace else where there's a bigger need. So the elementary is a conservative staffing plan. Elementary populations are transient, or more transient in general probably than at other levels, and we have some of our schools that are particularly transient in terms of families moving around, so we don't know who's sometimes really going to be showing up and coming there will be until we get really close to the first day or the first day. So we'll watch that elementary, the elementary enrollments very carefully. Good chance that we could be adding some more into elementary as we get deeper into the summer. Montessori school has matured to the point that we're adding additional teacher for the seventh grade. At the secondary level, generally speaking, there's, in our high schools and middle schools, you're not seeing much of a change at all, except that as we take a look at Plank Road, county restructuring programs has caused a decrease in enrollment, and you'll see a decrease in the teaching FTE at Plank Road for next year. As far as administrative assistants, select employees, administrators, there's no changes in those groups. With student services, there is a reduction of 1.0 FTE counselors in 2015-16. That's due to reductions in funds from grants. Secondary counselors have been redistributed across the four secondary schools as determined by student enrollment and need. In buildings and grounds, I'll go deeper into this when we get to that spreadsheet. There's no change in the number of building and ground support staff for 2015-16 as compared to last year, but you'll see the numbers look different, so I'll do some more explaining on that as we get to that. As we take a look at the elementary totals, I guess in terms of the spreadsheet, you can make your own conclusions, but what's quite amazing is how little change there is across this district from one year to the next, grade by grade. And you can take a look at the totals for kindergarten, and you can take a look at the totals of fifth grade, and there's not a lot of difference, nor is there a lot of difference school by school. I think that's a good thing. It says it's a good district above other things. There's the totals for elementary, and you can see that what is projected at this point is down from last year overall by three and a half, but I'm thinking, I don't know if we'll ever make it to 137, but we'll be up from 133.5, I'm guessing, before the end of summer. West High School, you'll see, not only are the total FTE stable from '13 to '14 and '15, but if you look at the sub areas, a lot of that does have to do with just general course selection requirements, and so that's going to make that pretty stable. The only things that, you know, might be different, for instance, are choices of foreign languages. There has been generally a shift to Spanish. We have a very large Spanish program, whereas we have smaller German and Latin and French programs. Those programs are hanging in there. In some districts, those have gone away. We still have Latin, a full FTE of Latin, and we still have some French carrying through, so it's not a dramatic decrease, but there's a subtle, I think, decrease over time. And there's East High School, you'll see that's, again, very stable. And Whitman Middle School. And Longefell Middle School. Maybe a good place to pause before we get into some of the special programs in some of the sub areas. Any questions about the general staffing or the general education, elementary, middle school, high school?
Can you go back to that slide with Whitman, please? Could you explain what unallocated means, or how that person might be used?
Actually, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know if...
I can answer it. When there's positions that haven't been allocated, so we use the FTE, Staffing Formula with FTEs. So for example, if they were allocated 38.24 based on the formula, what they ended up using, at least at this point in time, 1.0 was unallocated last year, ended up going into being a sixth grade classroom teacher to reduce class sizes. So at this point in time, the past two years, we've had, some of the staff has been unallocated, particular at Whitman, just trying to look at different positions of where the growth is and how it can be used. So it's not a, we normally, not normally, I don't think we've ever gone into a year with unallocated FTEs.
So...
That's at a point in time. That was last year, 2014.
2015.
In May, 2015 at this point, they're all allocated.
Second question, if I may. Do we know what are the number of staff that are job sharing?
I'd have to look and count.
So together their job sharing equals one...
You're asking me how many job shares exist?
Yeah, I just...
Roughly 10 maybe? I'd have to, I'd have to count. It has been fairly stable. There hasn't been a lot of changing in the numbers of job shares, addition or dropping either way. I'd have to look to find...
And is, just follow up on the job share, is it quite often a 50-50 split, or some I do, how might they be allocated?
50-50 or 50-50. Yeah, we do 50-50 job shares.
Those are my two questions. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Muefeld?
That's okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. This is a lot of detail. I know it's still in flux. Are you seeing any challenges with the different specialties? Any specialties?
Define specialties.
I know we haven't really gotten into that maybe yet, but...
Which specialties, I think, I mean, there's specialties, are you talking about art music, physical education, those specialties? Are you talking about...
No, just in...
Are you talking about hard-to-fill positions where there's maybe less supply of staff?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely. This, we got out recruiting early this year. We didn't have any recruited in the last few years. We've done, I think, four recruitment years. We had a really successful one at CISA one early in the season, before anybody else was even hiring, and we got out there and, early on, and did some hiring. I anticipate some real challenges. Family consumer education, we still have to fill, on math, science, and there is still blocks because of the things that used to hold people to districts that no longer hold people to districts now. There is less minute flux all over whether people add into their contracts penalty clauses or not. There's, I've talked to all HR people all over, and there's just a huge amount of movement going on.
Just one comment. I think it's very obvious that the people that we've hired so far this year, the amount of experience they have, they have good experience in other districts, is much, much greater than we've ever had before.
Yeah.
Without a doubt. We're hiring experienced teachers from other good districts that are wanting to come here, so that's a good sign.
Yep. Yep, definitely.
So I think our pain's less than in other places because this is a great district that people want to go to. But it's still going to be a challenge, for sure.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, let me, let's go on from there then. Okay, I made reference, first of all, to Plank Road. That's a significant change as far as 2015 staffing at 8.3 versus the 2014-15. And that's just a matter of things going on, the county things we don't have control of, and Dr. Wilkins will probably explain further if you have any questions on that. The virtual school hasn't been reported to you. I should clarify that a little bit. I just noticed that virtual school hadn't been reported to, so I thought it should be there, so you could see that in terms of transparency. That's not actually too fully, 2.0 FTEs to the district because of some county funding, I believe, there, and that is, again, being, that was similar last, in the current year in terms of, we have two people there that are not fully funded, ours in terms of FTE, but those are partial, and then it's a similar amount projected for next year, but that's all dependent upon the numbers of students and what drives how much we put there ultimately. Over, let's see what else I want to talk about. Only just the Montessori, you'll see that extra grade seven FTE which pushes them up to 6.50. I think that's on this slide. Any questions on this slide? Here, the only thing, like I said, the administrators, the select employees, generally, there's no changes. You'll see over on the district wide staff side, you'll see that the counselor number dropping to 17.0. That's related to the grant. Down below, I wanted to explain a little bit about where you see buildings and grounds. That actually used to be reported as custodians, and that 69.70 was called custodians. When I came into the district, quite honestly, I couldn't figure out what was counted into that count. So I felt, well, the best thing until I could, because I was just learning a lot of new things all at once when I came in, like February, March, I just took that count and I subtracted the 31 that we outsourced and thought, that has to be an accurate number then, because we've not added any, we've not taken any away other than those 31. Careful counting this year, I'm working with our supervisors, there are 34.50, so I don't know what was in that 69.70 count, that's what I'm trying to explain. And as I checked with Mr. Chanan, he wasn't totally sure, just without coming in and spending time with us, where that number came from. So from here on, you can be assured that buildings and grounds is including, it's custodial, and then it's also including the utility repairmen, operation relief workers, electricians, who are considered our support staff, and that will be, and we all know what we're all talking about every time we visit this conversation. Any questions about this slide?
Mr. Kroner?
Thank you. I had a question about the counselors. How many of the counselors are dependent on grant funds? Is that the majority of them, or?
None next year. Grants over.
So that was just one person, okay.
Well, it was more than that at one point, but it's, the grant funds have slowly run out. We went down two the year before, and then one person that was still grant funded is the last one this year, so next year...
I have a, I have a quick, could you go back one slide, just? The, no, the other one, Wilson-Stem.
Oh, that was between, wasn't it?
That one, that one.
This one, right.
Do, are we, I guess, just clarification, are both of those programs maxed out? Do you know what I'm asking?
Yeah, we had a seven-year transition for WSTEM, and we are now at seven years, so it's one section of Wilson, one section of WSTEM, so yes, it won't be growing at that site.
So if we have new students that are in the Wilson district, they would then go to Wilson School and not the STEM, is that how it would?
Correct. Unless they applied and were accepted.
If there's no other questions, ask the presentation.
Thank you. Board members, anything? Is there a public comment, please, on this report? Seeing none?
May I comment?
Oh, absolutely.
I'm, at least from the numbers, it seems that music staffing held solid. I'm glad to hear that, because if it hadn't, we'd have been hearing about it.
Yes.
Just, yes, just kidding. Zero.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. At this time then, we will entertain public comment on non-agenda items one more time. Is there any community comment on any items that were not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn the regular school board meeting and reconvene into an executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 1985-1C and E to discuss a settlement agreement for an employee, Wisconsin Education Association's salary and benefits, and to conduct an initial consideration of a complaint regarding an employee's request for early retirement benefits, and to determine if the board will consider the complaint further at a hearing before the board, or if it will decline further consideration.
Does it all move?
Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Galante, please.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. We're adjourned about five minutes.